...furnaces in the bay, we're going to get a report and recommendation follow on that. As far as EMS, continued QA QI on EMS runs, also EMS online continuing education premieres doing that with us every Wednesday where we actually, again with the COVID, we stay at our computers and go through training and then take a test to get awarded continuing education credits. As far as fire training, shift training occurs, again, every shift Kevin Widener is sending out EMS to everyone and they're participating in shift every day. Shift training yesterday and today was joint vehicle extrication training with Troywood at one of the auto parts auto salvage places. So again, that was a good joint training between the two departments. Vehicle maintenance, Engine 60 is down at the Dayton Fire Garage with pump issues. It had problems pumping at that fire, but we had many mutual aid pieces of equipment to supply the area ladder. Engine 62 just returned, it had pump board, preventative maintenance and lighting repair. Myself as quartermaster, I issued uniforms to two new hires. I recovered uniforms from the two employees that just resigned and ended lifecycle. I put to rest several T-shirts and a pair of bunker pants that were not salvageable anymore. IT communications, I'm preparing to work with Emery Communications for our telephone. We have some issues here. They think all this can be addressed remotely. Slow internet issue I reported last time has taken care of itself and we're back up to good speed. As far as fire prevention, we had one fire inspection completed last week and we have one scheduled for tomorrow. HR, of course, we do payroll every two weeks. Two people just finished orientation this week, two starting next week, three people awaiting DURC screening, MBR, motor vehicle reports and background checks. And then this Thursday, HR Director, Ms. Jones and myself will interview three, a paramedic, an EMT and a firefighter this Thursday. As far as public records requests from the fire department, one EMS is pending. Any questions from the trustees? No, thank you.
We didn't forget about you.
Not a problem.
As far as that not being on the scene, that was New Center 7 said firefighters battle the fire on Bricker and there were nothing, nobody there when they were filming it. That's how that came across. It wasn't that you guys.
They were filming the fire and there was.
They were filming the fire.
Well, they got there first.
Yeah.
And they weren't there in the daylight, so it was either first or after. We know you guys let it go in the head and let it burn because it's vacant, right?
No, we never do that. We have to put the fire out. But the fire was like three in the morning, so I don't know why they.
Yeah, so I don't know how they got the fire in daylight.
She was over burning house.
She was back.
So it could have been wrong foot.
She's outside.
Many a time they've interviewed me and I haven't been dating spiders.
Okay, so it's all right.
All right, thank you.
Let's do the outside people first.
Steve Wolf. Wasn't you on TV on that one?
I was, I was interviewed by Channel 7.
That's not on TV.
WHI of TV's website just had like 15 second footage of a house burning and nobody there, like why were they?
The headline was firefighters battle fire on Bricker.
Dave Hicks.
There was nobody there.
Dave Hicks.
So I gave the impression that nobody was there.
But you said it was daytime footage?
Yeah.
The fire was in the middle of the night.
In the middle of the night, that's what I told her, the 2:00 AM.
Yeah, I think it was 1:44 exactly.
Okay, let's do, let's do comments by citizens. I'll do the outside people first. A little more comfortable one here than there, I hear. So Mr. Dave Hicks, you have the floor.
Okay, two things. Commenting on, on the 12th of August at 8:28 AM, I took a picture of a 12 department female in Colleen was working in front of 4962 Hackett texting. I live at 4977, the road department was working cutting grass 4962 and 72. I cut my car at 72, both those houses are abandoned. I saw the road department pull up, I knew what was in, what it was about, so I went over to move my truck, put it in my neighbor's driveway. And it was going to make some gumbo that day, it's gumbo, started ruining the sausages. I observed this young lady get out of the township, truck texting. And went back in the house and from my kitchen window and my kitchen door, I could see that They coded around 8:15. Around 8:27, unlike, you shouldn't be texting that much, I understand that things come up, should have did a full 10 minutes of texting. And I got a picture of after she finished texting where she gets on the phone. And I got a picture of her on the phone. Now, Mr. Wolf said in the last meeting, there was no proof and that I wasn't here to attest to the photos. I've heard that she was taking pictures of the property. She, when she finished texting, it was basically a block, she went up, started pulling some of the foliage they were cutting down. She never went over to 72. So how could she be taking pictures? And if there are pictures, where are the pictures? I understand Mr. Wolf, Mr. Locklin asked for pictures and Steve sent it over through a sunshine app. And Steve sent it over to the county attorney, town attorney. I wonder why? So, that's all I wanted to narrate those pictures. Secondly, I want to address the article, I think it was in the Globe Hill Star, regarding trustee Wolf from Collin Township. It's alleged that the Montgomery County Sheriff Department is investigating him for forging, and I'll try not to laugh, the signature of the former sheriff of Montgomery County. If this is true, he needs to be put on unpaid leave until this investigation is completed and he's either proven innocent or they take further action. But my philosophy, if he, if he actually did do it, what else has he done? What else has he potentially put this township in jeopardy of that you just don't know about it? That's all I have to say. If anybody has any questions, if we'd like to see the photo with the timestamp.
Have you seen it?
Already seen it.
Oh, it's not time stamp, he is either following with the timestamp, he saw what I put on that story. This has a timestamp, I don't want that whole thing. Want to see the timestamp?
No, now, just clarification. You resigned from your position on either the BZA or zoning commission when the former administrator was like correct.
That is correct. And the reason I resigned is because I don't want to work with you and I don't trust you. That's why I resigned. And in addition to me resigning, the zoning enforcement person, who was Jeff Payne, he resigned, Mary Johnson resigned. So I think is, back then, they, you had part one of mass resignations, as I understand, that occurred today with the fire department.
So you've never been happy with this administration?
That has nothing to do with it.
Yes, it does.
That has nothing, I'm happy, this is my. That has nothing to do with it. If she had been texting for a couple minutes, I wouldn't have cared less. I had, I had time to walk in the, my house and grab my phone. I took this picture 10 minutes after she was texting. It has nothing to do with the administration. It has something to do where I'm paying somebody to text while they should be working. That is it.
Why are you trying to stand him up? It's not his problem.
The problem is with you guys and not.
We paid employees, why are you still running?
More than I've ever done.
What was that comment?
We're doing more than we've ever done.
Yeah. Oh, God, oh, my.
Do you know what I've ever done?
Get your boots out. How many firefighters?
Well.
Anything else?
You're never going to be happy with this administration.
Anything else? Okay, I'm done, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
DP Bronston, you got it, sorry, did I get the last name right, Bronston?
Bronston, B-R-O-N-S-T-O-N. How you doing, Steve?
Fantastic.
Good, good, good. I just wanted to come and first give kudos to anybody in here that's handling themselves as a professional and doing a good job. I know that administering this township that we all care about is not necessarily an easy job, so if you're doing what you're supposed to, and I know some people in this room and I know they do, I know they have done what they're supposed to be doing, and I want you to know that that's appreciated. If you're not, it's, it's a lot of concerns that I've heard from various different groups of people. I just want to tell you the transparency and accountability that people aren't supposed to be having out here, to the people that live out here and pay the money to live out here, it's not something cheap. And if you're not on top of your job, people are talking about it and they're going, they're going, they're going to come for your spots. I'm telling you right now. I mean, get on your job, please, because it concerns people's lives. I'm standing outside and I'm seeing a line of firefighters quitting, I'm seeing us using an ambulance for vandalism, I don't know who's responsible for that. I mean, like, I don't know, but I'm going to find out. I'm telling you now, I'm going to find out. If you're not on top of this stuff, these people who come up here, they're going to make you answer for it. It's going to be some transparency about where money is going, why the roads are crumbling, why the signs fall down, limbs falling in the streets, stay there, it's going, it's going to be some answering, it's going to be some accountability. So, I mean, and if you, if that's not you, disregard what I'm saying, I'm sorry you had to hear that, but if it's you, we're going to find out. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Brian Cummins, please.
Okay, my first concern is we've been told that money's going to be put into our streets at Bricker and even as of today, they're out there using probably gold patch and just filling in holes which are going to be gone next week. All that stuff's going to come right back out. We were told that they were going to grind the streets and pave them, not patch them with pop, the pop holes with subpar materials, okay? Also, we have vacant houses that are burnt and laying around. It's what, August, and they're just now starting to clean up the neighborhood, grass and things like that. When they have come into the flat there, they've done a crafty job, left stuff all over the streets. They did do a good job on the 10th of Thursday, they come and mowed it with the boom mower and then came back and blew it off. I've got to give you props, they did. But the road department out there today, pitiful, leaving pieces of asphalt all over the streets, but still they're putting whatever patch they're using in holes and just taking the camper and go and drive on down to the next hole. The biggest hole on Major that was there, didn't even put anything in it, it's full of water. There's a main leak right there, water main leak. The next thing is, you know, already dressed the trash thing, no problem, is the transparency, just like the man said. You guys have secret meetings, nobody knows where this money's going. You don't want to be accountable and come right out and tell where it's going. You have people that are important leaving that are the most important people in our community. It may be you that they come and pull away or pull out of a wreck or come and save you from a heart attack. You think that you would have respect for the people who are trying to save your life? It's just not fair. The township residents pay you as an employee, you're not the king, you're not the boss, you're here to work for us. And the other gentleman, the love thing on the job, who's the boss? Who's the supervisor? You know, who is actually going, you're not doing your job? Is anybody going to have to police in your crews? I know that for a fact that private citizens are doing it because they're tired, people not doing anything. The trash concerns over in our community, terrible. The stuff could be picked up, it's not. There's couches on the street, there's trash all over the place, and nobody's enforcing it, nobody. And that's all the time I'm going to take because of all the people that's got important things to do.
Thank you, Brian. Glenn, please, go ahead.
Yeah, it was about the roads too. I had spoke to Mr. Wolf around the first week until June and he said he would get started on that right around the month of July. He would work his way from Bricker over to Knox. And as far as I know, Knox hasn't been touched and my vehicle, my, my personal vehicle, and I know a lot of people in the neighborhood that have to travel that road. My vehicle has had, have so many repairs done to it. I'm a student, I had, I had to go to class every day. My 80-year-old dad lives out there, I have to take care of him every day. It's just, you try to go around potholes, you can't, there's just so many of them. And the, whatever the material is that they're using, what they've used in the past, it just breaks apart. It goes, it lasts maybe a week, the first time it rains, it just breaks apart, the hole's right back there. And it's just beyond work, it's just a mess.
And they're only patching the holes, they're scaled areas.
Another thing is, some of our neighbors are just downright rude. They've taken over empty homes in the neighborhood and just filled the yards with their trash. They park in the road and block the road so that we cannot get through. And these people that, that are doing this are ones that are living in government houses, the new houses that were built years ago. And I don't understand, they have, I suspect, running, fighting dogs, there's always dogs running loose, different dogs every week running loose in the street. Animal control is there at least once a month, but nothing is really ever done. It's just, it's just a shame that there's a lot of good people that lived out there, that have lived there their whole lives. And this, this is what their neighborhood is like now. It's not even safe to park in your own driveway. I, my truck and my, my, my Honda Civic or my Honda C-R-V, they were, they would have so many fireworks going on at, they were directly across the street and the other ones a little bit catty cornered across the street. They were putting on so many fireworks for a month and fireworks were coming down on top of my vehicles, hot parts were coming down on top of both of my vehicles. Cops were there, they were there. Before the cop ever got to the end of the street after they left, they were right back to setting off the fireworks.
And they were landing on the houses too.
Yeah. No concern for anybody else's property, not even their own.
Okay, last but not least, Jan.
There's a tropical storm named after me. I have a couple of questions. I hear that come September 4th, we're losing our medical director. Is that correct? And this person.
A dictator.
Oh, it has, okay, okay, good, I don't have to ask anything else. Oh, thanks for fixing the line of sight, but did something happen to our tractor? No. There are all kinds of hydraulic fuel spills all over the road.
We went back out there and looked, it's not our vehicle, ours, all we had was water from the condensation from the, the air conditioning of the unit. But that fluid is not ours. We looked at it, we even, you know, said, should we do, try to.
Okay, I was just asking because I know you guys was out there.
Right.
And while you're out there, why didn't they just do the other side of the street?
That's Moraine, and we not, we don't have jurisdiction there. But we went down to Infirmary and did the rest of all of.
Okay, on the west side, or, I mean, south side.
That's Moraine, City of Moraine, they annexed up to that property.
Okay, I see, I corrected then.
So when we snowplow though, we don't pick our blade up, we just do both because people, our people, Jefferson.
Because I know the one resident, he was concerned about that, he's, and his neighbor, he's like, why didn't they just do the rest of it?
And I, and I tell you what happened, just sort of similar story, the sheriff's department with their cleanup, Moraine had that part of Pinnacle on their cleanup list, Jefferson did not. And we had some residents asking why. So last summer, we were able to get the sheriff to add our side of the road when they use the jail people to clean up. So both sides of the roads are now going to be cleaned up. But again, the south side of Pinnacle from Infirmary East is City of Moraine.
Okay, I was just wondering. Also, I mean, in talking, we went and talked to this resident after, and in talking to him, he told us that you told him that the reason that it took so long to do that is because trustee McLaughlin had all the road department lawnmowers locked up for 60 days. Steve, that's a lie.
I didn't say that.
Why? Come on, I have heard it from more than one person.
No, I did not say that.
Okay.
You know, and I'm like any other resident, this township is gone and it's because of your dictatorship.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you. That's a compliment.
No, it's not, no, it's not.
He takes it as it is. Okay, trustees' comments or reports, it's my time first on the list and thank you for that. I listened to people, residents, in the past several weeks complained of concerns, I've had numerous phone calls and too basic attitude of not matter what, you look here, if you guys don't like each other, talk about the three of us, if you don't have to like each other, compete each other, because you got to get along for the betterment of this township, to make this township better. And I hear that. And I used to say the same thing when I sat up in the audience and the man I replaced, like, man, there's something wrong with that, there's something wrong with him, he's, he's the issue. And after sitting in this seat, it was not long enough. We have a trustee who's a dictator and we have a trustee who's just, is very, very hard to get along with. With the three of us, well, we're going to get along as long as Lunt Tracy continues being a dictator. That's all I say. So next is Mr. Jim O'Bard, that's vice president, this doesn't mean all this. Go ahead, Jim.
That's the script that you guys are bringing to the meetings.
That's your handwriting.
That's my handwriting.
Because I knew you were going to say that, we knew you were.
I wrote some of it while I was sitting here. Did you not see it? He has no control over what I say.
No, that, that is true, I do not.
Or what actions.
I'm sorry, are you?
You can ask everybody that.
Are you giving the residents of reversing this?
This is your first meeting, everybody else is carefully choreographed.
Oh, God, come on. You a man that's sucking up and changing responsibility.
He couldn't wait.
Hey, hey, citizens.
I was going to try to be honest, but come.
Hey, Jim has a four, quiet.
I don't want to insult you.
Jim has a four.
The whole year, this meeting has been about gotcha moments, put you on the spot, shame. All right, where's the community? You know, you go down to Miami Township, businesses are fighting to set up down there and we're arguing here in our meetings over oil spills and mowing.
It's not an argument.
No.
Okay. Everybody is preaching transparency, let's talk about that. I've never seen, I've seen one credit card statement and I've been here for five years. We got an administrator that can't get into our books to do his job, to pay his invoices. I carried a resolution to get a court order to get access into this meeting, okay? We've been looking for that for three years, we finally got it. A select few who are tight with Tracy get access to the financials. You go to, you want to talk about transparency, go to Ohio Checkbook. All our expenses, everything broken down there. Last year, it wasn't reported past February. She put a little bit up there this year, it's not there, okay? Okay, that's fiscal reporting, okay? So we're pretty much blinded on finances. You talk about roads, we had a discussion. Let's back up. We, last fall, we applied for issue two funding, okay? We had a road study to assess the roads to give us a grocery list on what we needed to do. That's something you, if you do a public records request, you can get a copy of it, but basically the gist of it is, it's about $22 million to redo all the roads, okay? So then the trustees, we all got together, we made a priority list and we decided to apply for low interest money to go after that funding. And we had to agree on a list of streets. Some of it's driven on citizen complaints. It came back because of the traffic levels and the condition of the roads, we were going to start the Derby Road. Your roads were in there too. The issue two funding fell through, okay? So when that fell through, after years of complaints and frustrations from folks like you that come out to the meetings and complain, we made a decision to put some road work out to bid and spend some money and try and get some things done. So we did RFP in the spring, we hired a contractor and lo and behold, two weeks before the road is supposed to work, the contractor backs out. He says he doesn't believe our neighborhoods are safe and our checks won't cash in his letter. Call me and I'll give you a copy of that. You don't get cold feet without somebody talking to you on something like that, okay? We had a major management change in roads under this gentleman's management. Everybody reported to him, we've got a chain of command here, everybody was supposed to report to administrator. Our administrator's doing his job, for example, he gets on a call out to go deal with something in the roads and he reaches out to an employee and finds out he was given the day off by him but didn't tell anybody, okay? So we talked, we tried to work it out, we tried to work as a team and guess what happened? Nobody's budge. So steadily the road department, people started quitting, they got sick of the same turmoil that the firefighters are talking about, okay? And then me and this man were faced with a very tough decision on how do we get. And then me and this man were faced with a very tough decision on how do we get control of management? Because if the sheriff's called for help, there are certain people that you call at three o'clock in the morning and get stopped up. At that point, we voted Mr. McGlaughlin out of sole control of the road department, and now it's in the hands of all the trustees. And we put Mr. Wolf in charge of it. My rationale for doing it is number one, Mr. Wolf was the person that taught us this process and helped us get us through the application. And then got us to the table. So fast forward to July. Contractor backed out on that job. We went to next in line on the bid. We'd already ran it out through an RFD. And we ordered up blue and black top to go out and do, based on our list.
We? Oh, okay, just clarify.
Okay. The work got done. About the same week they finished.
What work got done?
The paving repair work.
Where?
On Derby Road and Liscum and a couple of other places, I believe. I don't have the list here.
Well, about the Bricker corridor, that was, that was supposed to be done. They did about three thousand dollars worth of work. How much did you spend on that?
Well, that was a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
A hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the Bricker corridor work?
No, for the work that they completed. All right.
How many people were on top of that?
Let me finish.
No, that's not correct.
So.
Put my name in your.
The same week.
You harassing me again?
The same week. We found out because of all this COVID thing, a lot of cities that rely on like hotel taxes and so forth, their funding dropped off fast. So they made some budget adjustments that moved us up the list to be awarded that issue two money. So we got a four hundred dollar, four hundred thousand dollar funding package for the project that the trustees agreed on to fix first. And then we got the application. We're this close to getting the money. But these two and Mr. Hicks decided you don't want it. So when you go to vote, it is up on the ballot next fall. Okay, he doesn't care about the folks in that neighborhood. Okay?
Well, good.
So.
Whoa, whoa.
I have the floor.
I'm going to handle it.
No, no, no. He has it for you.
Keep talking. I'm, I'm looking.
Okay. Let's talk about trustees getting along.
Now, let's talk about where, where did the money go to fix that Bricker corridor?
The board, including Mike, was part of the vote on the list of streets. Okay? So, yes, we need to do that. I drive that. I've taken the same shots in my forehead, on the front end of my car.
We're going back to my truck tires. I've got two of them now. Two hundred dollars apiece. You don't want more?
But the board of trustees decided on the list.